All right, call to order, the November 19th, 2025 Planning and Zoning Board Meeting. Bobby, call the roll, please.
Rich Dally?
Present.
Gigi Dubec?
Present.
Tundra King?
Present.
David Mingus?
Present.
Carrie Anne Warley?
Here.
Carla Coleman?
Here.
Fred Stacer?
Here. So it looks like we have, David Mingus is sitting in for Robert Hartzell. And I can't remember who Carrie Anne's sitting in for, but...
Paul Fisher.
Oh, Paul Fisher. Oh, she's sitting in his seat, too. Boy, I'm not... You don't look like Paul Fisher. I just want you to know that right now, so whatever. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Whoa!
Yeah.
Don't tell him.
Okay, I won't tell him. Anyway, all right, with that, the next item on our agenda is the traditional 30-second moment of silence. So if you would, please take 30 seconds and we'll be quiet. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Do I need to remove these? Is this the agenda?
Yes.
It's got everything on it, so are we gonna... Want us to do it in the beginning? Okay. All right, well, before we do that, I'll go through the rest of this, and then after we do the individuals, we'll do it. Okay, next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes of the October 22nd meeting. Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any changes, corrections, adjustments? Okay, seeing none, Bobby, call the roll on the approval of the minutes.
Rich Dally?
Yes.
Tundra King?
Yes.
Gigi Dubec?
Yes.
David Mingus?
Yes.
Carrie Anne Warley?
Yes.
Carla Coleman?
Yes.
Fred Stacer?
Yes, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, individuals that want to testify tonight need to be placed where you end. So at this time, please stand and raise your... Where are you in? So at this time, please stand and raise your right hand.
Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, before we start in on the agenda, we still have four items on the agenda, but item number... Do I need to do them one at a time, or can I do all three of them?
I would suggest you take those that have joint applicants, meaning I think...
Two and three?
Two and three together, and then number four.
Okay, okay, so items two and three... I'm sorry, I'm skipping over item one for a second. Items two and three, the Verum Major Administrative Adjustment and the Verum Major Site... Administrative Adjustment and the Verum Major Site Plan. There was an applicant applied or requested?
The applicant requested to postpone.
Postpone?
Yes.
Okay, so that will be their first postponement?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so the chair will entertain a motion on postponing items two and three for the first time under an applicant requested postponement.
We make a motion that we postpone items two and three at the applicant's request.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to postpone items two and three. Are there any questions on the motion?
Mr. Chair, do we make...
Yes.
Need to make that until December as a time certain?
Yes, okay, so Bobby, what's the date?
December 17th.
Seventeenth?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Would you, Mrs. King, would you amend the motion to include the postponement to December 17th?
I'd like to amend the motion to postpone items two and three and to be placed on the December 17th agenda, agenda.
And Mrs. Coleman?
Yes.
You... Okay, second. Okay, and with that, do we have any other questions on the motion? Seeing none, Bobby, call the roll on that item.
Tundra King?
Yes.
Carla Coleman?
Yes.
Rich Dally?
Yes.
Gigi Dubec?
Yes.
David Mingus?
Yes.
Carrie Anne Warley?
Yes.
Fred Stacer?
Yes. Okay, item number four was a text amendment, and that was pulled, I guess, by staff because that's who it would be. So with that, do we have to put that on for... Or can they just add the text amendment whenever?
It's my understanding that that item is going to be stricken. It's not coming back.
Oh, okay, okay. Does that sound right? We're striking number four? Okay. All right, then with that, the chair will entertain a motion to strike item number four.
We make a motion that we strike item number four?
Okay, Mr. Dally move first, but...
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. You want a second?
Second.
Okay. All right, any questions on strike item number four, striking number four? Okay, seeing none, Bobby, call the roll on striking item number four.
Rich Dally?
Yes.
Tundra King?
Yes.
Gigi Dubec?
Yes.
David Mingus?
Yes.
Carrie Anne Warley?
Yes.
Carla Coleman?
Yes.
Fred Stacer?
Yes, okay. Now, we're back to item number one. You thought we were gonna just, like, leave you in the dust there. No kidding. All right, item number one, Aspire 1650, Request for Major Site Plan, P&amp;Z 25-12, 4-0 is 22. Broward Partnership for the Homeless, Inc., and its address is on Northwest 30th Avenue, known as Blount Road. Dr. J. Guevara, go ahead, please.
Good evening. I'm Diego Guevara with Development Services. The subject for discussion is Aspire Major Site Plan. This slide is to show better... To provide a better understanding and context of the current conditions of the property, and these are the approved modifications to the site plan in the recent years. The line use amendment from industrial to commercial, the resoning from community facility to general business, the flex unit allocation for a maximum of seven flex units, the site development agreement, and all these created two zoning designations that are shared by the property as a community facility and general business. Listed also are the conditions required for the project included in the staff report recommendations that we can talk about it... About them later, but basically are the Unit of Control, which is Instrument 118605618, that basically outlines that for zoning purposes, the two parcels will be considered as a single property. The Declaration of Restriction Instrument, which is Number 118611422, established the number of units, the transportation for school-aged children, and transportation for building residents, and the creation of amenities. And finally, the Flex Unit Resolution 23-21, allocating seven residential flex units, which allows for 19 bonus units for every very low-income housing unit that restricted for 30 years. Here you can see the location and aerial view of the property. The parcel is located at the east side of Northwest 30th Avenue, Blount Road, also known as Blount Road, 480 feet south of Northwest 19th Street, and 2,500 feet north of Martin Luther King Boulevard. The applicant is requesting major site plan approval to construct an eight-story residential used building, including 90 residential units, amenities for residents, and 244 parking spaces. Should the board find that the application has provided competent substantial evidence to satisfy the review standards for major site plan approval, the Development Services Department recommends approval of the major site plan subject to the following comments and conditions. First, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the proposed retention point relocation to the Sora Bunting property must be constructed and operating. Second, in order to meet the affordable housing requirement pursuant to Broward County Policy 2.16.3, a declaration of restrictive covenant must be recorded, committing at least seven units to be very low-income housing for a minimum of 30 years. Third, provide details on the operation staging for the transportation service, similar to a public transportation and public school bus service, for the residents and school-aged children as required by the declaration. Or the following resolution declaration unrestricted and restriction must be remain active with conditions... With all conditions satisfied. The resolutions were the same as listed before. Resolution 2023-21 Flex Unit Allocation, the Instrument 118605618 Declaration of Unity of Control, Instrument Number 118611422 Voluntary Declaration of Restrictions. Finally, the standard conditions of approval and/or specification required prior to building permits, zoning compliance permit issuance, items A through G. And that's it. That concludes my presentation.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions of staff? Yes, Mr. Dally, go ahead.
Very quickly, I'm just, to better understand, I checked out the site, the overall site plan as well as the summary here. Is it just 90 units? Are they all affordable, or is it there additional units beyond the affordable units?
No, they are required to provide a limited number of affordable, and then they have rental units.
So how many units is the proposal total?
I just want to clarify that. Maxim's Principal Planner Development Services, the whole development is affordable. In order for them to obtain the residential entitlements, we have to have a minimum of seven very low units. So that's... The report talks about those units, but really, it's fine with the concept that the applicant proposes. But in order for them to obtain the entitlements from Broward County's policies, a minimum of seven have to be recorded in this way.
Understood. So the project is 90...
Affordable units.
Affordable housing. Okay, perfect. No, I just wanted to clarify on the total units.
Anybody else before we move on? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Applicant?
This project, everyone in this building will be 60% of AMI or less, which, let me make sure before I say that number out loud, I believe is less than $58,000 a year. So they will all be employed, they will all have, you know, be healthy, living people, and they... But they will make $58,000 or less to be in this building. And so we're really proud to be able to offer that because there's a lot of great folks that work for us all, including the city of Pompano Beach, my firm, and all of us, that are in that price range that want to live here in our city of Pompano Beach. So we're really thankful to have Green Mills as a partner in that regard. And going on, our architect that joined us for this project, GHA, a lot of you are familiar with, have been in Deerfield Beach for a long time, they're very familiar with Pompano Beach. They've done great many multifamily projects, and also a great deal of affordable housing. To make sure we brought a really great design, because our mission is to make sure this is looks market rate. We don't want to look affordable, we want to look like a great project, like anything else you would see in the city of Pompano Beach. So just a little bit zoom in on our site. As you see, the green area that says B3 is our three acres. In a partnership with Broward County, they deeded us this land for this specific purpose, and it is deed restriction that will only be for affordable housing. We were very fortunate to win funds from Florida Housing to help us build this project. This will be our second project. Our first one is fully occupied in the city of Fort Lauderdale and is operating really well, so we're real excited about it. And as you can see, kind of a zoom out of what we've got going, this is 90 units. There is a green area that's left open that we're hopeful that if we get some future funding opportunities, we could bring in another smaller building, we... Maybe a different unit mix or something that would fit in that area. But the site is designed for the 90 units that you see here right now. It is eight stories. Just to put on the record, we are adding 160 new surface parking spaces. Staff pointed out that we have a 244. That includes what's at Broward Partnership right now because it's a total site, it's a unified site, and we will be maintaining all their parking needs to be maintained and kept intact as well. So we will make sure that the sites operate, although they're independent, they will operate well together as intended. You can see we have a nice mix in this unit. With Green Mills' experience, we look at what's the right mix of studios in one bedroom and two bedrooms, because we have a mix of singles and families and different things. So we want to make sure we have a nice mix in our community of different unit sizes. And so you can see them reflected here. We also want to make sure we have great amenities, like any other apartment building. We want to make sure we have that playground for the children that are there in the summer kitchen, and a fitness studio, and the club room, and all those things that you look for in a regular market rate will be available to all our residents here. In addition to that, we will have case management that's available to always help these folks, because even if they weren't formerly homeless, these are folks that are just at risk because they make less than... And Broward County is a challenging economy to live in. So ours case management is available to anyone that resides in that building to assist, to help them with any of the needs they need and to assist them. This is a shot of the amenity area, the outdoor kitchen area with the play area and the tot lot and all that, be fully fenced and everything. And the other thing that's really important in these projects is the maintenance. We do have a full-service operator that runs our facilities to make sure everything is done properly, but the maintenance on these are really important, that we keep things up and they're looking pristine because they can't fall out of order, and Florida Housing checks that to make sure as well. This is just if you got interested in what do our actual floor plans look like, what's our mix of our units. So we included that for your review. And this is kind of that ground floor amenities, showing how some of our amenity space... Some of our amenity spaces on the ground floor fit in with the gym and the different areas to see how things would flow through there. Just so you know, earlier this month, we were at your AAC and got some... Really, it was really rather nice. We got some really glowing regards from every single AAC member that they felt it was actually really in line with a lot of the market rate, and in some cases, better than some of the market rate things that we've seen here in Pompano Beach. The other thing, we did a lot of time paying attention to the exterior and the colors of this building. There's something else that's important, is a lot of these folks have been through hard times and been through. So there's a whole network of folks that talk about what colors help people that have trauma and things like that. So we really looked at what are the right trauma-informed colors, that what works well? Because the other thing is, we're gonna see this from our assistance center, and other people are gonna see us from around. So we want to be... Because we are eight stories in a low-rise area, we want to make sure that we're something pleasing to see even beyond our site itself. So we spent a lot of time looking at the exterior of the building, working with staff to make sure we had, you know, the right look, so it wasn't just a big, flat building with big, flat areas. So we were really proud to be able to bring forward this building that we're really proud of, and hopefully you like it as well. And so that's kind of all the different sides of the building that I'm kind of whipping through kind of quick here. And of course, in this shot, the amenity area will be in that brown section down in front there. So that's really our presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and we hope to have your support tonight.
Okay. Anybody have any questions of the applicant?
I do, but I'd like to let everybody... I always go first. Let somebody else go first.
Anybody else? Anybody else have any questions? Okay, I think you're it. Go ahead, Mrs. Coleman.
First, congratulations on your grant. I know that... I know how disappointed you were not to make the first round last year, and so it's good to see you successful this year.
Thank you so much.
My questions really have to do with safety on this site. And so I'd like to get into the non-controversial, non-confidential parts of the SEP Ted report, and you can explain to me how some of it works.
Okay.
You have a tremendous number of cameras in this facility, which I... If you read the report, and I commend that because it is in a challenging location, and...
Mrs. Coleman?
Yes.
Would you be able just to move the microphone closer?
I'm so sorry. Usually, that's not the complaint. But it's passive. Explain to me how the security will work, Doty, so I'll understand how you're using all these cameras and how they're being monitored.
Okay, some of the security you see is also probably in addition to what you see in other affordable projects, because we at Broward Partnership take security very seriously, as well as Green Mills. So we do have a lot of cameras. We have full-time staff that is there 24 hours a day. We also have security at the HAC Center, which is adjacent to us, that patrols the property and even through the night will be out, have... Do night walks and things like that. The... In the apartment building itself, the staff will really be more available to patrol outside and around in the daytime, but we'd like to have a lot of security in the area and well-lit facilities, because well-lit and cameras just deter things that happen no matter where you are. If you look big on having cameras, we also are looking into tying into the BSO. We've talked to them about their live crime center and tying our system into that, and we're seeing how we can make that work as well.
And there is a license reader as well.
Tell me again, when you enter, yes, there's a license reader, so every vehicle that's coming into the center, we will have a record of.
But the camera room itself, where you've got, I guess, about 30 cameras, I didn't count them all, but if you read SEP Ted report, it's about 30 cameras. But that's... It's not in a monitored room. It's a passive monitoring of that system?
I think that's right.
Okay. Is that enough? How do you...
We have not had... We've not had a problem with that elsewhere. You know, if there's an issue or a problem, we always can go look at the different cameras. The main entryways and things like that are areas that are set up with access points. All doors have proper locks, unless you have the right keys, you're not getting into any exit or entry doors.
Okay.
And all of that is regularly maintained. But in terms of our... Do we have a bank that looks at... And could I have Mitch come up? Because he's my co-developer as well. But I do not believe we have a bank of 30 cameras, but Mitch, help me out.
Name and address, please, first?
Mitch Rosenstein, 16520 via Anisha East, Delray Beach, Florida 3.
Could you just raise the microphone to your...
You're just a little taller than...
A little taller than Doty.
Doty's right. Hopefully, I can help supplement some of that. I want to add that we have key fob access entry points at all areas of the building. The way our communities normally work is we've got a lot of cameras and a lot of footage.
Right.
Typically, it's... The screens are kept in the property manager's office, the main community manager's office. We record for a certain amount of time based on SEP Ted recommendations, and based on law enforcement recommendations, based on insurance carrier recommendations, things like that. The cameras are interesting. You can't go overboard with cameras. They have to be strategically placed. And some attorneys will say they should be oscillating, some will say, no, they have to be fixed. So there's a big debate out there, especially, you know, amongst attorneys as to what the best process and procedure is, and that's why we default to following SEP Ted guidelines wherever possible.
Okay. And it's okay, whoever can answer the question. The entrance to the facility is on the east side, correct? East side of the building?
No.
No, it's on the south side. Oh, the entry to the door?
Into the microphone, please.
End of the building is on the east side.
Could you repeat that into the microphone?
Yes, the front door that enters the building is on the east side.
On the east side, correct. Okay. In the SEP Ted report, it asks that the bike racks, and this board is really big on bike racks. Thank you. But there's two that I see on the site plan. But one is basically off-site in the vacant area, and the other is at the end of the building. Would you guys please take a look at that and see if you need to move those bike racks?
If we can move them, we absolutely will.
Okay. These are minor, but they're what I consider kind of livability points for, because I really want you to be successful here.
Thank you.
Obviously, there's going to be children. I love your playground area. I love your outside area. I was involved in building a similar area at the Salvation Army on Broward's site there. Where is the school bus going to pick up the children?
I would anticipate Broward Public Schools will stop on Blount Road. And there will be a bus stop at Blount Road. So there will be a sidewalk that goes all the way down our entry that takes them out to Blount Road. That will be up to the school district. We would obviously ask them to come, if they would come in, we would ask them to come in. But the school district decides that. That's not something that we can control.
Well, I have some concerns about Blount Road, especially with the traffic, the industrial traffic on Blount Road. And the amount that's going to come onto Blount Road when the interchange is redone at the turnpike. And it's going to direct that traffic onto Blount Road, not onto MLK any longer. Those plans are already set by DOT. And if you drive one way with the school bus, you can pick on the sidewalk. The kids don't have to cross the street. But coming home is going to be the other side of the street. And if there's anything we can do, urge you to try to figure out how to have that pickup onsite. I think that that's going to be a big safety factor there for schoolchildren. And I know you're saying that's, but in the meantime, you guys are going to transport those kids.
No, with, we expect the day we open that Broward Schools is going to be providing transportation for school-aged children. It's a policy of Broward Schools, that they will be, their buses will come. We are designed that a school bus can make the loop, similar to a garbage truck, a fire truck and all that. We do have a loop that they can do. We would be happy to request that they make that loop. Whether they will agree or they stop on Blount Road. Blount Road is a two-lane road. So regardless of what side, you know, the buses have people stop. And we would be very aware of that. But we can certainly request, because it is set up that they certainly can physically do the loop. It's not a problem for that.
If I may, I go that way every day. The bus already comes there.
Oh, that's correct.
Because you have families at the HAC Center, so the bus is already there.
They pick up our children that are staying at the homeless assistance center today, every day, and bring them back.
And they pick them up on Blount Road?
On the loop or inside?
Now, when I've seen them, they come through the parking lot.
They come into our parking lot. And it's usually a smaller bus because it's less.
I don't know how many it's going to be with your new.
But that would be fine too, if that was the stop inside that lot, so it just keeps them out of the roadway. I would think at a minimum, that's where it would be, because we already have the bus coming in there. So at a minimum, it would be in that parking area. But certainly, if we can have them make the full loop, we would ask them to do that.
If it's in the parking area, I'm fine with that. I'm just trying to keep the kids off Blount Road.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. King.
That's great. My only other question, my only, two other questions. Okay, I did the bike racks. Your stacking area on coming into the, what I guess is going to be a fobbed arm to get into the facility itself. The stacking area looks very, very short coming into the facility. Can you put up the site plan?
Is that it? Do I go by it?
There. I don't think that even shows it.
That doesn't quite show it.
No, it doesn't show it. Staff had a small site plan in their presentation, which I think you can see it. But it's, I can't believe that it meets, that stacking area is sufficient for a locked gate. It is a locked gate, is it not?
It is not a locked gate. It's a stop-and-go gate with a recorder that records entry. So we will not have, we met with BSO. Actually, we added the gate. It's not required that we have a gated community. We wanted to provide for extra security. It is at the edge of the building, this is the existing building. So it is a stop-and-go gate with a recording on them. We do meet the stacking requirements for Broward County that will go out to Blount Road. We've checked that and gone through Broward County with that. But it is not a manned-operated gate.
And it's not a locked gate?
Correct.
Not even at night?
Correct.
And SEPTED signed off on that?
Correct.
I'm a little surprised.
It's technically not a code requirement that we have a gated facility at all. It is something that we preferred to add. And because of the design and the stacking and whatnot, we didn't have a, there's no way to turn vehicles around. So we opted to do a stop-and-go gate as a deterrent. But it started off as non-gated complete facility.
I do have some concerns, I do have some concern about safety issue there. But if it's not a code, if it's not a code requirement?
No.
Guess I can require it. Okay. I truly hope that you, the area with a mental health jail down the road. So anything that we can do on security for this building, I know your concern is, your concern is as great, if not greater, than mine. But I just would like to bring that up as a concern.
Thank you.
And lastly, if you look at the SEPTED report, this is so minor. But there's, in the report itself, in the notes that go with your plan, there's a number of repetitions. That's okay, repetitions don't bother me. It's just reinforcing a point. But four E and F are in conflict. So you may want to look at those. They talk about putting locks on your outside outlets. One of them says, you must have them locked. The other says, well, if you can lock them. So I'd like to ask that you delete F, which says, well, if you can lock them. Because I think most of these kind of facilities have locks on the outside.
Locks on the outside of what?
The outlets for electricity, so no one can steal electricity around the building.
That's not one for water as well.
It might be, but I did pick up in the code, E and F are in total conflict.
I'm sorry, you mean literally the exterior, on the exterior of the building? The lots that you?
One requirement says they must be locked, covered and locked. The next requirement says, well, if you feel like it, you can cover them.
We'll ask, you make a good point, there shouldn't be a conflict. We'll have it clarified.
Repetition doesn't bother me.
We'll have it clarified.
I mean, we might have a plug out by the grill area and stuff, which we wouldn't want to lock that, you know? So I mean, there's certain, I mean, I don't know what kind of lock. I mean, I know you get hoods over them to keep the weather from being in there. But we do not expect general public to be back there plugging things in. We have residents that live here. And if a resident is plugging in and charging their phone while they're grilling or cooking, that's, you know.
I'm just pointing out that they're in conflict, so you might want to fix the conflict.
Look at that, we'll look at that.
Thank you.
Mrs. King, did you have something?
Yes. I know I've come to a couple of events with you about the unhoused. And so I just don't want your beautiful new project to be in a place for them to come back to. If you notice, that area has been pretty much cleaned up. I don't know who to attribute that to, the commissioners or BSO or whomever. But they've done a good job. And I don't see as many people, you know, congregating out there like before. There would literally be 50, 60 people out there on a daily basis, because that's my route into school every day. However, with the gate not being a gated community, if you will, and you say you have a security guard. Like I said, I don't want to see that uptick come back with the people coming back there on the property. You have kids there now, you're going to have more kids there. And I understand what Ms. Coleman is saying, because they come on our property every day and charge their phones. I don't run them off, because my landlord don't care as long as they don't bother anybody. But it will be a great place for them to come and charge their cell phones. So I hope that you would have a security that would, you know, closely take a look at that. It just seems like a nice, comfortable place for people to come now and have somewhere to lie down or get out of the sun or whatever on your nice tot lot. So I hope those cameras are going to be working and that someone would periodically monitor those. It would be great if you could tap into the real-time camera system. Because BSO does have the 24-hour monitoring, so that would be, I think, a great asset to the project. But I like it, I'm looking forward to seeing it. The other question I have, with the people that are currently already in the HAC, will they be able to get? Are they getting like first dibs on the project, or how does that work?
We have to follow the Florida Fair Housing. So there's, there will be applications that'll be available to go in. We hope to have the folks that we have in the HAC that are ready for housing and been waiting. They will, you know, they will be applying as well. But it's really, will be open application. I don't remember when we did the one in Fort Lauderdale, we had hundreds of applications for 72 units. So they're very, these are very well-sat off units. And I will tell you, in regards to what was going on on Blount Road, huge credit goes to the city of Pompano Beach, Broward County, BSO, and I have to say, my team at Broward Partnership for the homeless. We really said enough is enough. We can't have people living on the sidewalk at Blount Road. And that is routinely monitored now by the BSO and our staff. And anybody that decides they're going to set up there, the city of Pompano, along with Broward County, is notified. So there will not be people that are living on the sidewalks along Blount Road any longer. And we will, with our full-time maintenance and operations folks, there will not be people coming back into our facility, laying on sidewalks. Right now, anybody that is homeless, that needs that kind of assistance, should be going into the HAC, be going through that program. If they don't want to be part of that program, then they need to be going somewhere else. And we're working with BSO and all those folks to make sure that happens. But there will not be folks allowed to come back into our facility and be hanging out outside unless you live there. And that will be monitored and enforced every day. So we do appreciate that concern as well. And I'm so glad you noticed Blount Road, because it makes me so happy to drive out there and see how great the entire roadway looks. And you're right, it had gotten, but there was a lot of work by this city and Broward County and BSO to make that happen. And they did a fabulous job. And Broward Partnership was proud to be part of that. They were very respectful to the folks, but they will not be living on Blount Road any longer.
I saw the signage for the trespass on the SEPTED report that Ms. Carla spoke of. And I don't know, maybe we need some signage. If you don't live here, you shouldn't be on this property. Again, I just, I don't want to see it go back to what it was. Because if not, it's for not. Because we're trying to help the people that really want to have someplace to go. And I don't want your new place to, you live out here until you get an apartment in there. So we want to keep the area nice. The signage is nice out there, so that helps. So I don't know, other than the trespass signs, if you have any plans on putting that. You might think it's not necessary, because you have the trespassing signs. But we need everything to keep that area nice and keep it safe for our babies that'll be back there. School buses, more kids are going to be there, access to more people. So I know you say you're going to follow the plans as relates to people that get apartments. So that includes a record, background records checks on everybody going in the program.
All of our residents, all of our residents will have background checks, criminal checks, even credit checks. Now, we can turn the dials, we will turn the dials up and down to be flexible. We want to screen people who.
But not with that, not with the criminal history, just with the credit you're talking about?
No, with all of them, reasonably. We draw the line with violent and sexual criminal histories.
Okay.
If someone has a misdemeanor in their background and they've paid, you know, their dues to society, we want to find ways to screen people in as long as we know that they're going to be a good resident and be a good neighbor. So, and that's part of what we're trying to do here. Half of our homes are going to be reserved for folks who are at risk or who are formerly homeless. But this is not temporary housing. This is permanent housing with services wrapped around that's offered for those residents that need those services.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
I just got to say, I love this. This is, like, it evokes an emotion from me that is passionate in helping the community. Kudos. And I am happy to be able to support this today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Worley, go ahead.
I'm also going to say, it's a beautiful project. And I think, I love the fact that you have all these beautiful amenities there. And, you know, meets obviously all the codes, so I think that's wonderful. And I'm glad that you're bringing this to our community. So thank you, I appreciate it, and I will support.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, I just had two things. One is a technical. I don't think we put on the record about the five conditions. So we're okay with the five conditions of staff?
We agree with all the five, the staff conditions, we agree to them, yes.
Okay. I have one question that, and I don't know if this is even necessary or not, because it sounds like you actually have this bus situation under control. But would you like us to give you a recommendation that you could actually show to the school board and say, hey, the planning and zoning board's worried about, you guys aren't going to flip on us and put the kids back out on Blount Road? Would that help?
I don't think we should have that problem. They've been coming to our facility for, I don't know how many years, and they've been fine. I'm sure they would prefer, as a bus operator, picking up children to be off of the main roadway. So I don't think that's a challenge for us.
Okay.
I agree, I might add, if we need your help, we're going to take you up on that offer. It can't hurt, just in case we need that, and I appreciate that.
Okay. That's, okay. So we'll just put it in the back, then staff will pull me in to sign a letter that says that the board.
You know I can get pretty pushy if I.
Listen, if you can't get it done, I doubt if I will. But, but.
Thank you.
Well, throw something else at them and see what they say. Or I'll walk it over to the mayor or something, or whatever. And you would anyway, so whatever.
Appreciate that.
Okay. No, okay, but no, it looks great. I, just for the record, I did talk to the applicant today in reference to the project. And, but nothing that was said would affect my vote tonight, in terms of, how I'm going to vote. Okay, anything else? Oh, I didn't open it up to the public. Does anybody in the public want to speak on this? Okay. Seeing, that's fine. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing portion. Go ahead, Mrs.
Sorry, this is just more of a curious question. How many children do you think will be in this project?
It's a good question. I think we have 14 two-bedroom, two-bathroom units. And that's really where we would see kids most likely.
More into the microphone, please.
Sorry about that. Andre's 14, 2-2s, I believe.
Yeah, 14.
Yep, thank you. And that's really where we'd see most of the kids, as opposed to studios and one-bedroom, one-bathroom units. And we expect that most, if not all of those units, will have kids. And in those bedrooms, we suspect that some of them, there might be two kids in that second bedroom, if that makes sense.
And then I did see, I think in the notes, have we, depending on how many students, can Broward County of the school system fit them, you know, into?
There's no problem with the ability.
Overcrowding and all that.
For Broward schools, yes. And just to give you an idea, not that I need to add something, because they tell you to shut up when you're doing okay. But to put out there, like a two-bedroom here, would start at about $900 a month for a brand-new facility like this. And a studio could start as low as $600 a month. So we're really looking to have people be able to live here and work here and call this a great place to live. So we're very proud to be able to offer that to Pompano Beach.
Okay. Okay. All right, with that, if there are no other questions, then the chair will entertain a motion on item number one.
I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Dally, go ahead.
Okay. Sorry, I should have this ready. In consideration of planning and zoning application number two, I got it, I got it, guys, don't worry. I didn't have it, I should have, I got it right here. I move that the board finds competent and substantial evidence that has been presented, that satisfies the review criteria and approves the major site plan with five, subject to the conditions, five conditions provided by staff. Wow, I stumbled all through that.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions on the motion? Okay, seeing none. Bobby, call the roll on item number one, please.
Rich Dally?
A big resounding yes.
Thunder King?
Absolutely.
Gigi DeBeck?
Yes.
David Mingus?
Yes.
Carrie Ann Worley?
Yes.
Carla Coleman?
Yes.
Fred Stacer?
Yes, all right, thanks a lot. Good luck with your project, looks like it's going to be great. Thank you.
Invite us to the Brown, to the dedication.
Okay. So we either postponed or struck the balance of the items on the agenda. So that puts us out to staff reports.
Audience to be heard.
Oh. Oh, okay, you're right, audience to be heard. Anybody in the audience? Anybody in the audience wants to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item. I flipped over on the wrong side of the page. Okay, any staff reports tonight? No? Bobby?
No? Just happy to be here.
Yeah. Counselor?
That's Bobby.
You're good? You're good? Okay. All right, board member discussion. Mr. Dally?
Happy Thanksgiving, you guys. It's my favorite holiday of the year.
Wait, are you dieting before, or is that...
I'm actually dieting now, guys. I don't know if you've noticed, but I've lost 10 pounds. Thank you so much, you know.
I can gain 10.
Thank you, thank you.
I could gain 10 pounds on Thanksgiving. Okay. Mrs. Worley?
Same. I would just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and we're towards the end of the year, so it's been a great year, and I look forward to seeing you in 2026.
Okay. Mrs. Coleman?
Happy Thanksgiving, and I'd like to thank staff for the new clock that I can see.
Right here.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
Mrs. King?
Happy Thanksgiving. I don't have anything.
Okay. Okay, Dave?
I'm also looking forward to Thanksgiving.